Good evening. It is Monday, July 10th, 2023, and I'd like to call to order the Common Council Meeting of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin State Statute. I'd ask our clerk to confirm this meeting was properly posted.
I confirm.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start our presentations with item number two tonight, which is a proclamation declaring Betty Nelson Day in the City of West Bend. Just yesterday, the Museum of Wisconsin Art hosted a birthday celebration in honor of Betty's 100th birthday and opened the museum up to the public free of charge. And I had the honor of attending that celebration with Jay and some other community leaders. Betty was a big-time donor of MOA and a handful of dozens of other organizations across the community, which I'm going to read about tonight. Betty was not able to attend. She is in good health. She's out at Cedar Community, but all of her children and family members were there. It was quite a nice event. So this was the proclamation I read yesterday. Whereas Elizabeth Betty Nelson celebrates her 100th birthday on Tuesday, July 11th, 2023, and whereas Betty has been a staple of the West Bend community for a considerable portion of her 100 years through her many philanthropic contributions and the Cliff and Betty Nelson Leadership Award, and whereas in 1988, the United Way of Washington County created the Clifford A. and Elizabeth M. Nelson Volunteer Leadership Award to honor individuals in Washington County who demonstrate a long-term commitment to volunteering. This award is named in honor of West Bend resident Cliff and his wife Betty, known for their outstanding volunteer efforts on behalf of human service, civic, and arts organizations. And whereas Betty has a love of art and music, and she sang in the Fifth Avenue United Methodist Church Choir for nearly 60 years, and in 1961, she developed a program to bring fine art prints to local first and second grade classes at the West Bend Gallery of Fine Arts, now the Museum of Wisconsin Art. And whereas Betty and her husband Cliff supported numerous projects and charitable organizations throughout their lives, including the Kettle Marine YMCA, United Way of Washington County, Boys and Girls Club of Washington County, West Bend Community Foundation, the Museum of Wisconsin Art, and the City of West Bend. And now therefore I, Joel Ongert, Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim July 11th as Betty Nelson Day in the City of West Bend in recognition of Betty's life and her impactful contributions as a leader and philanthropist. Happy 100th birthday, Betty, and thank you for your lifelong support of our community. We're now going to move on to both of office for Police Officer Dylan McGuire. I'll invite Chief and Dylan to come up front.
Have you raised your right hand, replying after me? I state your name.
I, Dylan McGuire.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As police officer.
As police officer.
In the City of West Bend.
In the City of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Affirm that I will support.
Affirm that I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The said duties.
The said duties.
Of office.
Of office.
I said that wrong. The duties of said office. I apologize.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolute pleasure to introduce Dylan to both our elected officials and the community. Dylan comes from us a little bit of a long way around. Went to high school in Plainfield North, Plainfield, Illinois. Forgive you. Then moved up to Amayal, my honor, UW Stevens Point, where he attended with Officer Gates, who will be shortly pinning your badge on. Then graduated recruit school at Midstate Central in Wisconsin Rapids and has worked for the last year and a half at Fontana PD. I know from our background, Fontana was very sad to see Dylan go, but we're very glad and happy to have him join our team. Dylan, Trevor, you want to come out? Dylan was actively recruited by Trevor Gates. Officer Gates embraced our strategic goal of recruitment, retention, retirement. Thought this would be a great fit for Dylan, having attended UW Stevens Point with him. Had Dylan come do a couple ride-alongs, and he agreed this would be a great place to serve a community, to protect and serve. So we're glad to have him. Trevor, I'd like you to pin on Dylan's badge. And thank you very much for being part of our recruitment. Dylan's family is down in Indiana. They couldn't be with us. Hopefully they're watching tonight. So we thank you for the work you did to raise such a fine young man, and we're happy to have him on our team. Congratulations.
Meeting and go into some committee meetings. So I will call to order our Licensing Board for Monday, July 10th, 2023. We recognize a quorum of our Licensing Board with Alderman Butchlick, myself, and Alderman Zingshine present. Our first item of business is a recommendation from the City of West Bend Police Department on an operator's license. I'll call Chief to the podium for this.
Good evening again, and thank you again for letting us introduce Dylan and celebrate a new member to our team. I appreciate it. As you know, the City Clerk's Office and Police Department work closely to vet every one of our operator's license applications. We take it extremely seriously, knowing that our operators are really the first line of compliance within our community. We not only rely on them to comply to the law themselves, but to oversee those who are purchasing alcohol or participating in its consumption in those establishments. We have an expectation that they will also be that first level of enforcement to make sure compliance is there. Without that, that's an unengaged community, whatever community is, and we all know that that's not a safe community. A safe community is an engaged community. I've been very happy to come before you in the last several meetings and say the Police Department hasn't had any objections. Unfortunately, that streak ends tonight. It's not something I enjoy. It's not something that we enjoy, but it is something that we take very seriously. So I am asking that you deny the operator's license for Savannah Wesley tonight. It's important that we know an operator's license is not specific to an establishment once issued that can be used in any establishment within the City of West Bend. So it's important to keep that in mind. We view that as a position of responsibility regarding customers purchasing alcoholic beverages, control of that licensed premise I mentioned, and the conduct of people within that establishment. So as we review, we look to see a pattern of behaviors, a pattern of incidences that would suggest that there will be issues with enforcing and complying. Unfortunately, you have the packet in front of you. Ms. Wesley has had several, numerous actually, incidents that involve alcohol, physical altercations, some marijuana, what could be viewed as a reluctance to take responsibility in the fact she has almost $3,000 of outstanding fines with the Mid-Murray Municipal Court. And the recency of her actions generally would give everyone a chance to have a second shot and turn their life around. But her latest incident, and a significant incident, occurred just weeks ago, less than a month ago. I can go over each individually with you, but that seems like it might be unnecessary. I'll open up for any questions.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion to deny. Thank you, Alderman Butchlick, second by Alderman Zingshine. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Our next item of business is amusement arcade license for Lakes State Vending, doing business as the West Bend Axe and Escape Room. There's information in your packet on this one. It looks like they're wanting to add a couple of dartboards and a crane-armed type of thing that typically grabs candy or toys.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshine. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is coin and precious metals or stone dealer license for Patterson Watches.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshine. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fourth item is secondhand article and jewelry dealer for Patterson Watches.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshine. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our last item of business is secondhand and article dealer for Premier GSC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshine. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That adjourns our, concludes our business for the Licensing Board, and I'll adjourn by the call of the Chair.
I would like to call to order the Finance Committee from July 10th. We have one item on the agenda. Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, Park Trust PARC funds. Good evening. Mike?
Good evening, everyone. The PARC account is a non-lapsing special account to provide funds to be used throughout the park system. The funds should be used for capital development and facility improvements. The funding source is past donations that did not specify a specific use. Also, some of the funding that's in there is remaining from the development of Quas Creek Park about 20 years ago. Currently, we have approximately $52,800 in the PARC account. $9,800 of the funds have been set aside for Emerald Ash Board tree replacements in city parks. Tonight, we are requesting approval to transfer $18,684.40 from the PARC fund to an expense, to expense accounts to be used towards the following projects. Caro Cus Memorial Field, $10,000. Regner Park Swim Pond Lifeguard Chairs, $8,684.40. The West Bend Baseball Association is in the process of completing a field lighting project down at Caro Cus Field. We ran into some soil issues on two of the four light poles down there. We just, we have poor soils at Regner Park. Because of that, it required additional engineering and additional work to get those two remaining lights installed. Also, the cost of electrical materials, like many things these days, have been increasing, increasing, and increasing. So poor soils for two of the poles and additional costs for basically the wiring has initiated that request of $10,000 to support that project and closing out that project. The second request this evening would be the two lifeguard chairs for Regner Park Swim Pond. Currently, on the north and the south side of the pond, we do not have lifeguards for two of our coverage zones. We have certain zones for the pond for the lifeguards to cover. Getting those lifeguards up about six feet above the patrons and above the water, they have a better look, a better view down on the water. Throughout this last winter, this spring, and the summer, we've been trying to incorporate smarter, newer, better ideas and practices for the swim pond. So the Park and Rec Commission did vote unanimously to utilize the PARC funds to cover these two expenses. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any questions for Mike? There are none. We have motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Having no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as Chair.
We'll reconvene our Common Council Meeting at this point. I should recognize we do have a quorum here tonight with Alderman Dolnick excused absent. We've got Consent Agenda Items 3 through 8.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Zingshine. Any comments, questions, discussion?
Yes, I'd like to, is the applicant for the liquor license present? Do they want to make a statement?
I'll entertain that, but I don't think that she is present. Chief, I think I know most of the people in the room, but.
Okay. You know.
Very good. We've got a motion on the floor, a second for the Consent Agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our first item of business is a resolution expressing support and thanks for Wisconsin Shared Revenue Legislation, known as Wisconsin Act 12. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Berquist and Alderman Allen. This resolution is in your packet. Any comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item of business is consideration of an initial resolution regarding industrial development revenue bond financing for GenX Holdings. And we have Ms. Linda Timplin from Hirsch Blackwell. If you wouldn't mind, come to the podium, and I think Jay Chambeau and Ms. Timplin can take us through this one.
Okay. Good evening. Linda Timplin, I'm here to introduce a resolution and tell you a little bit about conduit bonds. First of all, this is probably about the 600th conduit bond I've done, and we did do one in West Bend some years ago, but certainly the council has turned over in that time. Let me first just say, a conduit bond is simply that. It's a conduit. You borrow for things the city needs, and that's a direct obligation. You levy a tax or you pledge revenues. That's a direct obligation. It's not a conduit. Historically, private companies couldn't use tax-exempt bonds, but when Congress decided that they would allow them, they looked at the kinds of projects that they wanted to incentivize. And among those were small-issue manufacturers. Their theory being, a small manufacturer creates jobs in a community, increases the tax base by virtue of building a building, stimulates the broader economy by the need to manufacture, manufacturing equipment. And so it's a better bang for your buck than, prior to 1986, for instance, they allowed tax-exempt bonds for Burger Kings and McDonald's. So many of those fast-food franchises were done with tax-exempt bonds. They called them burger bonds. And then Congress took a step back and they go, you know, those are fine institutions, but they don't put a substantial bricks-and-mortar footprint that generates property tax. Their wages are generally not as high as manufacturing, so they wanted to incentivize manufacturing. So they built into the statute a mechanism that said, a tax-exempt bond must be a municipal bond, but it will not be the obligation of the municipality. It will be a conduit by which that private borrower, if they qualify, can use tax-exempt bond financing. And so I don't know if this little short summary was in your packet, but we laid out specifically, it is not an obligation. You will never be held responsible. At the time that the bonds close, there is, their bank is both the sole bondholder and the purchaser of the bonds. You will assign away all your rights, responsibility, obligations, everything to the bank as the sole bondholder. You're out of the deal. We file an 8038 with the IRS saying you were the conduit issuer. What is the borrower, how does the borrower benefit? Because the bank will be the sole bondholder, they will not pay federal income tax on the interest income that the borrower pays. And so that results in a lower interest rate. Right now, that interest rate savings is about $12,000 per million dollars of par per year while the bonds are outstanding. And so you can see, we said not to exceed 10 million. The bond may be a little smaller than that. We use a not to exceed at this stage. When we get closer to budgeting everything and figuring out the eligible costs, it may be less than that. But let's, because it's easy math for me, let's just say it's 10 million. Well, if you're saving $12,000 per million dollars of par per year, in year one, they will save $120,000 in interest costs. That enables them to hire people, to, you know, create benefits. The job also, the statute requires that we give you notice, and it's in the notice that we publish after the resolution, assuming the resolution is adopted, that we indicate to the public how many jobs are expected to result in the next three years as a result of the project. And the borrower has estimated that this project will create 70 jobs. So a conduit bond is really just a bank loan dressed up with the bells and whistles that make the interest on it tax-exempt in the hands of the bondholder. You have no ongoing responsibility. I would note that historically, cities didn't include it in their financial statements, but more and more over the last 10 years, usually the municipality will indicate in a footnote that they have a conduit bond. And it's a footnote because you have no obligation with respect to it. Do you have any questions?
Please.
And Mayor, if I may, and I, just so the council knows, reached out to our municipal advisor, Phil Kassen from Ellers, and he confirmed everything that Ms. Timplin just shared with us.
I've worked with Ellers a lot.
Industrial IRB is 100% conduit financing and will have no impact on the city's borrowing capacity or in any way impact the city's bank qualification for issuing debt. Just to give a piece of light regarding that.
Justice.
What is the benefit to noting that in our financial statement?
I don't know why they note it. It may be, I don't know, maybe self-promotion, so when somebody else comes, they know if they've done it before.
Okay.
There is one limitation. This borrower could only have a maximum of $10 million of tax-exempt bonds in West Bend outstanding at any time. So they borrow, let's say they borrow 10 million on a bond now, and in three years, they needed to put a, they were a victim of their success, and they needed to put a $5 million addition on. They couldn't do another 5 million if they had 10 million outstanding. So you having that information in hand would be useful as well.
So once that outstanding is taken care of, they could do that again, though?
Pardon?
Once the outstanding debt is taken care of, they could do that again, though?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And in fact, let's say that didn't happen for six years, and they'd paid off 5 million of it. Well, then they could do another five, as long as they didn't go over the 10. Somebody over here had a question.
Yeah. The question I had, is there a limit to how many of these the city can do? I mean, if we have 100 people that want to borrow $10 million, pretty soon we begin to look like a good source of cash.
You look like the place to be, is what you look like, because being a conduit issuer is one of the most powerful tools you have in your toolbox. I noted on your agenda that you have a couple of development projects that you're going to be discussing. I don't know what they are. I have no dog in that fight. But I will say that typically, someone comes to you and they say, how can, how can you help me? Can you give me TIF? Can you give me land? Can you, you know, there's lots of things. And municipalities, there's only so much you have to give, right? But if they qualify, and not all projects will, you know, if it's a retail store, it's not going to qualify. But if it's a small manufacturer, it will. You can confer a really measurable monetary benefit to, for them at no cost to you. Any cost you have, legal costs, out-of-pocket, administrative, are paid by the borrower. So we said potentially $120,000 of savings. That's a great benefit. And if West Bend became known as the city that knew how to do bonds and was open to it, that'd be great. Years ago, I did so many of the manufacturing facilities in Franklin. They had a first and a second business park. I drive through there, and I swear, every other one was done. Franklin did more tax-exempt bond financing than almost anyone at that time, and that's how they built out their business parks.
Good questions, Alderman Allen, Alderman Model. Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Butchlick, and second by Alderman Sternick. Any other comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I just want to, I just want to make a point about Consent Agenda Item Number Three. I was approving the denial of that license. The way it's written, I just wanted to make sure that's understood.
Are we clear on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Good point. Thank you. Congratulations, Rick. Before we move into closed session, I'd like to take up our reports before we turn into closed session. So we have reports tonight from the Joint Review Board, the Park and Rec Commission, and the Plan Commission meetings. I guess I'll take the Joint Review Board, since I was the one there. The Joint Review Board meeting was just that. It was the Joint Review Board. The Joint Review Board consists of the City of West Bend, Marine Park Technical College, the West Bend School District, Washington County, and an at-large community member. We recognized a quorum of that meeting without Washington County present, and we went through every single one of our TID districts. And the meeting consisted of Mark and Jay and Jess going through really the health of every single one of our TID districts. It's a meeting that is technically, it's a state statute that we have that meeting. We weren't discussing new TIDS. We weren't discussing closing TIDS. It's a meeting of review, an annual meeting that's state statute. The meeting lasted about an hour and a half long. It was very informative. We do have an agenda packet that we use for that meeting that I'm sure we can make available if it's not already posted somewhere. But very good information on the overall health of our TID districts. Park and Rec Commission meeting.
It would be me. Okay, so we did meet on Thursday, June 29th. We discussed a number of things. The park funds that we voted on tonight, we discussed that. We approved the permission to proceed with the Regner Park entrance signage, which looks pretty cool. If you can find the packet for that, it's a, it's a neat-looking sign. I didn't know that we were working on that until I joined the committee. I don't think we made much, did we, Mike, did we make any changes to the, to the program fees? Anything major?
Nothing major.
Doesn't seem like it was, no.
No.
Yeah. Discussed a special event, the German Fest. It's Thursday through Sunday, August 24th through the 27th, and then multiple reports. And that's about it.
Good.
And then Planning Commission, also interesting. We met on July 5th. We did approve a conditional use permit to allow an unspecified conditional use specifically for a transload facility for hazardous Class A low-level radioactive waste materials located at 1095 East Rusko Road, excuse me, by Southern, by Wisconsin Southern Railroad LLC and Watco Companies. And then we had further discussion and ultimately approval of the food vendor, the mobile food vendor that Jeremy Hahn was looking to do at 801 West Washington Street. We did add an additional condition of meeting in six months to do a review, see how that's going. And then we had two CSMs. One was combining three lots into one at 701 South University, and the other was extraterritorial, and that was combining two lots into one located at Northeast Corner of Silver Lake Drive and Quas Drive. And that's about it.
Very good. Thank you. Any other announcements the council would like to make for the good of the order? Go ahead.
Downtown is still open. I encourage everybody to patronize the businesses and restaurants that are downtown, bars. Great place. It's a little rocky, but it's no worse than walking around your garden. So make believe you're walking through your garden and stopping for a beer, or to buy popcorn, or whatever. It's a good thing.
Very good. Thank you, Alderman Allen. Any other announcements? We do have a couple of items. We do have a couple of items appropriate for closed session tonight, and so we will go into closed session under Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, specifically two different TID 16 development agreements. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to go into closed session.
Thank you Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Model. We'll take a roll call.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Berquist.
Aye.
Alderman Sternig.
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick. Excused, I'm sorry. Alderman Sparts.
Aye.
And Alderman Zingshine.
Aye.
Alderman Model, too.
I apologize. Alderman Model.
Aye. What's up?
We will, we are in closed session at this point. Depending on how our closed session goes, we may reconvene into open session to take action, we may not. And so if we don't reconvene, we will adjourn our common council meeting from closed session. We will now reconvene back into open session of our common council meeting tonight. Based on discussion in closed session, I will now entertain a motion for two developer agreements in TID 16 contingent upon approval, final review of technical corrections by the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you Alderman Model and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. With no further business tonight, we are adjourned. Thank you all.